For approval.
I'll second it.
Second by Lena. Any further discussion?
No.
If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Three, three in favor, one abstention. Second of all, we're gonna pick up the farmer's market to see if we can get that before the public hearing. Larry, you wanna tell us the...
This is a site plan waiver request for Milford, Mass., Farmers Market, Inc., properties at 66 Dillon Street, the water company. The applicant requests a site plan waiver to authorize the occasional temporary seasonal use of a portion of the subject premises for a farmer's market. Market would permit primarily produce vendors, along with possibly a limited number of other related vendors. The farmer's market would utilize the grass area north of the northerly or rear parking lot behind the water company building from Sat-- on Saturdays from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., as noted on the plan that's attached. The grassed area would be available for vendor uses for tables, booths, and tents. Vendor vehicles will be parked on the separate adjacent parking lot to the east, actually it doesn't show on your sketch plan, thus leaving the entire northerly parking lot free for patron parking. There will be no physical changes to the site, therefore recommend the requirement for full site plan review be waived. And you have...
Yeah, all the letters, they're all...
The other letters?
All approvals. Anybody from the farmer's market here?
Yep.
Could you give us your full name and...
Jennifer...
And your address.
Jennifer Demange Yeon, 51 School Street, Milford, Mass.
Thank you.
What is the last name, Demange?
Demange Yeon.
Do you have anything to add to the...
We're just, we had to move. We would've loved to stay here at town hall, but we needed to find a place that had grass and a little bit of shade and was a little more conducive for all our vendors and so we could get a little bigger. It was a real big success last year. We had a really good year even though we had a very short season, so this was what we were able to find due to zoning restrictions, and the water company was kind enough to allow us use on Saturdays. We've worked with Mr. Condry and Mr. Duncan to try to maintain what we needed to, and we're really looking forward to a good season.
Thank you. Pat?
I certainly support the cause. Unfortunately, I don't like the location that you've picked. I think on Saturdays, Dillon Street with the passive recreation and the traffic flows, I think it's a tough, tough site. The other problem I have is when the water company was building their addition, we limited, for them during construction, we limited certain hours of operation, if you will. If I can ask you just a foolish question, would something like Brookside Elementary School be of any benefit to you?
To residential zone?
Yeah.
It's a farmer's market. It's farmers. It should be exempt.
Well...
You know, I mean, here's my problem. I love the idea, and I think you guys have done a tremendous job, okay? And arguably, the town hall's in a residential neighborhood as well, but it's... I know, I know.
Town council and I have been through all this with them, so...
Yeah, we...
I love the idea. I cannot support the location. I just don't think it's the best location for what you're attempting to do, and I just think that... I saw someone else's follow-up letter that suggested that you get a detailed police, which I think you're eroding from the premises when you start, you know, when you start to force yourself into paying for something that you shouldn't have to pay for. And again, nothing against the Milford Police, but it just, I just don't like the location. Like I said, I would prefer, I would much prefer something like Brookside.
You're, I mean, we would, we wanted to do something at town hall or town park or Plains Park or somewhere that was a little easier, but...
Less congested.
Yeah. Unfortunately, due to what was explained to us as zoning restrictions, it left us in a spot to try to find a place that was commercially zoned, that was at least reasonably accessible and well-trafficked. I mean, we do...
You certainly have well-trafficked.
Yeah.
You hit that criteria.
We do. And really, there's, I mean, we spend hours and hours looking for... And it's just, our green space is just so eaten up.
And this is why I was wondering if the school would be...
I'd love it.
Especially Brookside on a Saturday during the summer months is really not utilized.
Even the high school.
The accessibility is ideal, and again, I, I think Jerry could've looked at it differently because I just, I think conceptually it's a great idea, but I just, I can't go along with the location. I just, I would much prefer to see it someplace better or less congested with traffic.
Yeah, the members?
I kind of agree with Pat, but I'd like to see you give it a shot to see, you know, what it really does to the traffic. You know, on a temporary basis, maybe if it doesn't work, then you'll realize it's not working, and you can move out. So I'm game to let you go temporarily.
I mean, I really, I mean, it is a congested road, you know, relatively, but...
I'll throw that right up.
And we do have to take into consideration the traffic and, you know, coming in and out, but, I mean, most...
Well, I understand what Pat is saying. I mean, Dillon Street is just unbelievably busy and with, you know, with a trail there and one thing out there, but I agree with John that you should give it a shot and try it, and if it doesn't, if it really consumes parking and that sort of thing, you know, I, you know, I think it would be only fair for you to look for another place for the following year, seeing it's gonna be on Saturdays, which is a very busy, busy time. It's a very tough time, you know, and then, you know, the buses are coming from that area also on Dillon, the school buses in October. I'm looking Octo-- Saturdays.
On Saturdays.
Saturdays, Saturdays.
Yeah, no, I completely agree. It's...
Yeah, but I would like to see it happen. I think it's a great idea. I, you know, people love to go to the farmer's market. I do it myself, so...
It's been fantastic. I mean, it really, really has, so...
Brookside would be great, you know, in different areas, but...
Yeah, I mean, if we could, you know, if in the future we could look at, you know, we can certainly reevaluate it.
Okay.
I mean, it would be, I think giving it a shot would be fair, and if it does cause some sort of issue, we can reevaluate and try to find something else, but, you know...
So I'll make a motion.
How would they get, how would they get approval from the school?
Uh-oh.
Could you get with Jerry and come up with a zoning bylaw change that will allow such a use to occur in residential? Because I don't...
On the weekend?
Correct. I mean...
If there's nothing at school, why not?
And one other thing, just for true transparency, I spoke to Bob Tremblin. He has no objection if you wanted to go up to Brookside, subject to getting a zoning, but if you could work on that, because I don't think it's the proper location, but conceptually it's a great idea, and I, to Lena and John's point, I certainly don't want to stifle what you're trying to do, but on the same token, I don't want to read in the paper that there was...
I don't either.
...fender vendors and everything else and confusion, and I really don't...
That is not our intention at all, so yeah, I completely agree.
And again...
No, I do.
And I just don't agree with the idea that you should be forced into getting a detail to direct traffic. I just, I think that that erodes from the basis.
Well, that's gonna happen anyway. I mean, unfortunately, I think it's important for them to do that, to get the detail because, because of the heavy traffic. I think it's a wonderful idea that you're getting that done. I really do.
I'd like to see it tested first, though, before you really decide whether you need it to call up police or something.
Well, if they have accidents, I can assertedly tell you that the chief will...
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah, he will, he will get into it by then. I know it. So with that, I would like to make a motion to, in favor of the site plan waiver, with the thoughts of having Larry make a...
Checking on the school?
Checking on the school for...
Jerry, to see if we can use it then.
Okay.
I made the motion.
I made the motion. She said, okay, moved by John, and seconded by Lena. Any further discussion? Any none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Three in favor, one opposed.
And do remember, if it doesn't work out, you're still approved at this site. So if for some odd reason it becomes an issue, you can certainly temporarily come back. But again, I'd like to see a zoning change to allow it.
I mean, we can always work on it together.
No, I just asked Larry to do it on our behalf. Thank you.
Well, I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Good luck.
Hope to see you all with us at some point.
I was here and supported.
We'll be driving by it.
I handed off the reins to some very worthy and capable people, so thanks for being...
Just as well. We would've shot you down.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
You're all coming behind you.
Okay, we have a public hearing at 7:05.
On Tuesday, March 18th, 2014, at 7:05 p.m., the Milford Planning Board will conduct a public hearing in Room 3, Milford Town Hall, 52 Main Street, Milford, Mass., on the application of San Nila Crossing LLC for approval of San Nila Crossing Definitive Plan, a 33-lot residential subdivision located on a 74-acre parcel off Fisk Mill Road. It's an RC zone.
My name is Robert Foxon. I'm with Gary Aaron Howland Engineering. I'm here representing San Nila Crossing LLC, and what the applicant is proposing to do is to construct a 35-lot residential subdivision that is on 75 acres of land located between Fisk Mill Road, Field Pond Road, and Whitewood Road. Currently, Field Pond Road is a 3,400-plus-foot-long cul-de-sac, and it was always the intention when that subdivision was designed and laid out that their proposal would be to someday extend the roadway through and create a throughway so that the extended dead end, it's against zoning subdivision regulations, would be eliminated. So what we're proposing to do is access from Fisk Mill to Field Pond, construct these 35 lots with a small cul-de-sac here and several lots around it. The site, the green here you see are wetlands that have been delineated and flagged on-site. The, this orangey color here is showing the location of stormwater management structures. There will be four stormwater basins in all, plus a, just a direct discharge through a water quality swale for a set of catch basins here. The majority of the site will be serviced by onsite sewage disposal systems or septic systems, except for the first six lots up here that will be able to gravity feed into the existing sewer on Field Pond Road. So these, these three and three here will tie into the sewer. All the rest will have onsite individual septic systems, all be designed in accordance with Title V. The site, the roadway will require the crossing of the wetlands in three locations. The first is here in a small little, little seasonal stream that runs down through the slope here. Second is in a location here where it's relatively flat. The third is the same location here. Historically, this site has been vacant for a long time, all the way back to when it was once owned by Fafford, who mined gravel out of the location until he got to the point where there was nothing more to take, and thus created areas that were low in here and allowed floodplain to be created in a little bit of this low area here. We're proposing wetland replication in a location of isolated upland, that there's a existing cot road access to it with a couple of culverts with a wetland on either side. Subdivision will be serviced by town water. The wa-- the, and drainage will be catch basin and drain manhole structures through piping it into the stormwater structures to attenuate total suspended solids and peak runoff. The applicant is proposing to phase the site. This is the phasing plan you see here. They're proposing two phases. First phase, coming in off of Fisk Mill Road, constructing the roadway up to this location here, plus the cul-de-sac, and also a water line would be constructed that would connect to the existing water line on Whitewood Road, serve feeding this particular section of water. As part of the Phase 1 construction, there will be construction of Field Pond Road from, from Fisk Mill to about Station 50 plus 00, and then all of Barbara's Way, 500-foot-long cul-de-sac, and 15 lots will be developed off of this first phase. And then the second phase will be the continuation of the road and the connection into Field Pond, and then the development of the remaining 20 lots, two more stormwater basins and one more, and two well and crossings. All the construction activity is proposed to come in from Fisk Mill Road. No construction vehicles will be entering the site from Field Pond. All construction vehicles will enter through Fisk Mill, thus the phasing aspect coming from this way and then continuing on through. That's a pretty good, that's a pretty much it for the explanation of the development.
Excuse me? Wait a minute. I don't get that, there's a public hearing. I don't get that during the speak. Bonnie, you wanna go over your...
Well, most, most of my... Sorry. Most of my comments were related to engineering details and the drainage plan specifically. The, my, my biggest comment is that more than 5,000 square feet of wetlands will be disturbed by this project, so this project has to go through the MEPA process at the state level, and that, and I've seen nothing come across my desk as conservation agent that indicates that any of that is in the works. Can you, Bob, can you tell us a little bit about that?
We will be, we'll be submitting that shortly. I expect to just file a notice of intent with the U and DEP this week, and then we will start the MEPA process, the ENF.
Okay.
And, you know, we've done the stormwater pollution prevention plan. We'll do an ENF, and the NIPD's permit is in the works, too. So we understand that that is part of it. I mean, we are, one of the crossings is a limited project crossing, which allows us to go over the 5,000, but it does kick us into a threshold which will require the filing of an ENF. But generally, the ENF process, you want to make sure that you've got some kind of a viable project, and it looks like, you know, you're ready for approval before you get too far along in that, because I've had them, you know, I've had them actually ask me for the approved plans to be submitted, so...
Well, and just to clarify for people who aren't familiar with the process, the ENF is the Environmental Notification Form. Often, the comments from the Department of Environmental Protection come back requiring an environmental impact report if they think that the impacts to the environment are great enough, so that may also be required for this project.
Yeah, I've never, I've never had one on a subdivision of this magnitude with just this foot, but yeah, it's possible. It's possible.
So in, sort of in tandem with that, the MEPA and the DEP don't consider this a phased or fragmented project in any way.
Oh, no, no. I don't consider it that way as far as environmental concern either.
And so for, from a planning board standpoint, I, I think that it should also not be considered a phased project. It should be looked at as a project in its entirety.
Well, we're not, we're not asking the planning board to look at the project as a phased project as far as their approval process. We're seeking approval for the entire project. The only phasing is for the construction of the project. All the impacts that the project will create are considered as, as part of the project, and we expect the board to consider all those impacts all at once and not, and not look at them separately.
My, my other big comment was most of these lots are proposed to be on septic systems. As you indicated, this is, a lot of this area was an old gravel mine that has been excavated down to groundwater level. There's nothing in your, in the submittal that I saw that indicates that any kind of testing has been done to show that septic systems will be able to be installed and be supported by this development.
Well, based on, based on the Soil Conservation Service soil classifications, most of the soils are Canton soils, which is a B soil. There are dawthens in the section which, which represents the area where the gravel was removed. Much of those particular soils that are, would be unsuitable fall either within floodplain or in wetlands areas and probably within the open space more than anything, so, and I've done, I did a, we went out there and did preliminary testing. We did about 12 holes, and we all, we got, we got, we hit no ledge in any areas up, and we actually, we kind of started up here and worked our way down. So we didn't really go down in here, but we went up in this area here. Almost every other lot type thing. Got good depth, got good material, perk rates around 11, 12 minutes an inch for, in a couple of places, so we're pretty confident that we'll be able to develop all these lots with, with septic systems as it goes along, plus, I mean, here again, it, you know, the applicant understands that you're not guaranteeing, the approval of this subdivision is no guarantee that all the lots would be buildable. That's, that's given with any subdivision.
Say that again, Bob. I'm sorry.
Basically, if you approve a 35-lot subdivision, you're not guaranteeing that all the lots will be buildable. All you're guaranteeing is they meet the zoning requirements you need to set, you know, they meet all the, all the area, the shape, everything of that. It's up to the applicant to be able to demonstrate that he can build on those lots as he, as he go along.
Okay.
So, so we understand that.
And then finally, the, and the highway surveyor made this comment as well. I agree with him. A bond should be put up for the road in case the road is never finished. I recommend it at 30% contingency since this is a private project and it's not subject to prevailing wage rates, so if the town were to come in and have to finish the project, it would actually cost us more than the developer, so that, that is my recommendation.
Yeah, I have no comment on that. I have no comment on that, right?
Oh, my goodness. I think that's a first.
That's not my purview to come up with that, so...
He doesn't do that.
The other, the other, to just, I mean, oh, you're gonna go through the letter, so I'll, I'll talk about it when you get to the DPW letter, so...
That's, that's it for me for now. Yeah. Bob and I can't, I can't add the other details.
And as I say, I mean, you know, the, the letter was, it was, it was, it was a plus in a way because we probably haven't taken a good look at our details, our standard details in a long time, and, I mean, so I, Bonnie spent probably more time than anybody in our office has spent on them in the last 10 years, so there were a few of them that were outdated, and there were some spelling errors in quite a few, so... That was, that was, 16 of the 26 comments were based on typo errors and problems that we had in our, in our detail sheet, you know, so...
It's like the pages, yeah.
Yeah, I know, but in the, in like maybe four others were...
Right, well, it's not just narrowing details.
Four of them were probably regarding wetlands, so there's only about six or seven comments that are actually, you know, that, that's something we need to look at and address, so...
We won't be closing the hearing tonight.
No.
I don't think so, yes.
You already paid, trust me, we already paid.
I can't be closing the hearing tonight.
No. Yeah, no. So, so I, I'm confident that by the next, by the next meeting, all those items will be addressed, and I'll have plenty of time to get this to Bonnie, and we'll be able to go over it, and I'm expecting a clean letter the next time around.
Larry, you wanna go over your letter?
Sure. The applicant's proposing 33-lot residential subdivision, including two new streets. Property consists of approximately 75 acres located northwest of Field Pond Road and east of Fisk Mill Road. I reviewed the proposed plan dated 2/18/14 and find it to be marginally in compliance with Milford subdivision rules and regulations. The proposed plan extends Fields Pond Road in a generally northwesterly direction back to Fisk Mill Road. A concern noted during the preliminary plan review was, was the correlation of any proposed phasing scheme and the physical construction of the street in its entirety to Fisk Mill Road. In addition, it was staff's understanding that the open space lot near Fisk Mill Road was to be included in Phase 1. The plan was updated, so what's being presented tonight does include it in Phase 1. There are extensive wetlands, floodplains, and steep slopes on the property. Substantial amount of regrading will be necessary. Nothing, and spelling errors in my own report. Regrading will be necessary to complete the plan as currently proposed, and most of the lots will be served by individual onsite septic systems. No filing is made with CONCOM or MEPA, and to date, the issue of Field Pond Road being completed in its entirety prior to any occupancy permits has not been formally resolved. Therefore, recommend public hearing be continued to the 4/18 meeting to allow sufficient time for the applicant's engineer to adequately respond to the concerns.
Okay. We got a letter from the Board of Health that says that all lots not being serviced by municipal sewer must meet all the requirements of the vast environmental code.
Title V. Yep.
Which we know. The highway surveyor recommended the bond, third-party inspector, which we all agree with. All wheelchairs must be made of concrete.
The sidewalk would be all concrete.
Yeah.
For the wheelchair ramps, yes.
And road opening permit for, in the trench blanket, the thing that's a standard thing.
Yeah, there's actually, the only, the only, there actually would be, the only road opening permit would, there actually would be no road opening permit because the, there is a sewer manhole off of the edge of Field Pond Road.
Yeah.
Off the pavement, and the water gate is also off of the edge, so there would be actually no opening of the road of Field Pond or of Fisk Mill. I guess, I guess Whitewood would be the only place when we have to connect to that 12-inch water main, so that would be the only place.
Yeah, the other openings, any trench that he opens has to have a, I think.
Yep.
Okay, the fire department gives you an okay on it. The water company is their thing with their, their...
The inspectors.
...workable getting paid.
Yeah.
And putting in the right piece, the right part of, the right equipment. I don't see one from the sewer.
Unfortunately, they met last Tuesday, and I, I wasn't aware of the meeting, so I'll have to get with them to the next meeting, but hopefully we'll be resolved that. They, in the preliminary phase, they did approve that they did, there is, I, I do have a letter previously stating they would allow the, the connection for six house lots into the sewer, you know, and, and really originally, we weren't gonna go that way, but when you looked at these, these first three lots are probably the ones that are impacted by, by wetlands and slope the most, and it just, it just makes it easier to develop them if they're on sewer than it is trying to fit in a septic system. So it worked out good, you know, it worked out that we could do it that way.
Okay, the board wants to say it now, you wanna wait?
No, no.
Come on, come on and wait long.
Okay, we're gonna open up to the public. You'll address the, the chairman. We're not gonna have a debating society here. Also, when you, when we recognize you, if you give us your name and your address, so the secretary can put that information down. Anybody?
Yeah, Peter Scandoni. I live at 57 Whitewood.
Come up to the mic.
You wanna come up?
Oh, no, wait a minute.
Wait, he's got a mic.
He's got a mic.
You're on TV. You gotta smile.
Yeah, my, my neighbor, Tracy Maynard.
Mr. Maynard couldn't be here tonight, so they asked me to bring up a couple of points. They live at 62, which is adjacent to that wetland, yeah, keep going down, yeah, right there. Yep, that's, yep, that's Maynard's house lot. And that wetland, that elevates quite a bit during, during the rainy seasons or rain, bad rainstorms, and it has been known to overflow into the street and into Mr. Maynard's lot. So is this, do we have assurances that this isn't gonna contribute to that problem, or we just want to be on record that that's the main concern?
Yeah, we did a, we did a drainage study, most of these. In other words, what happens now is that you've got this area up here, which flows in this direction, towards this wetland. By putting this road in, it's gonna intercept a lot of this runoff coming from this upper hill, directed into catch basins and have it come down this way and flow down to a basin this way and flow into this direction. So the, so our, our numbers show that we will actually decrease the runoff, the peak runoff, to this location as it got, from, from developing these lots because of the intercepting the lots of the road, plus the development of the lots will, the driveways, like driveway will all come into the road, the driveways will come into the road. So, so most, most of what you're gonna get, other than the, the trees and the woods back here, are pretty much like backyards of the developed lots that might flow towards here. This, this line, you see, there's a line right here, that's actually the proposed limit of the lots. Everything beyond it, this area here, all this, is all open space, all to be undeveloped, left in its natural state, so there'll be no disturbance of the ground cover in those areas there. So, so our, you know, our, our proposal and our, our numbers show that we were actually gonna decrease the amount of runoff in this direction after the development is built.
Hi, I'm...
One person at a time.
Is he finished?
Is he finished?
I don't know, yeah.
I'm, I'm part of him.
I understand. Give us your name and address, then.
I'm Tracy Maynard, and I'm at 62 Whitewood Road.
Yes.
Now, as he explained, the wetlands next to us gets very high in the spring and sometimes in the fall, and we've had one instance where we had two feet of water in our basement because the wetlands got so wet that we had to have the fire department come in and, you know, shut off our electrical. So that's why I am so concerned about what you just explained and what Peter brought up, is even if you do build up on the hill, you change the landscaping, which might trickle down, you know, underneath the ground further into the, the wetlands, or do you... down, you know, underneath the ground further into the wetlands or disturb the wetlands.
But you're not, you're not, you're not being, in the spring and in the fall, you're not being affected by groundwater. You're affected by, you're being affected by far and runoff and, you know, because the groundwater, the groundwater elevation is pretty much the elevation of the wetlands. That's, you know, that's what happens, the ground, the wetlands are created because the groundwater stays closer to the surface. These houses and their development, like I said, that runoff that used to come this way is mo, is, majority of it is going to be intercepted before it gets there and it's not going to go in that direction anymore. So we're, you know, we're confident that, you know, we're not required to try to correct an existing problem that you may have, but we are trying, we definitely will not make it worse in our development by intercepting this will actually, should make it better.
So when you put that water pipe in, the water drain pipe?
That's not a drain pipe, that's a water line. That's a, waters are buried under the ground, you never see it.
So that won't affect when you're building?
Not at all.
After you do that, it won't affect the wetlands?
That's correct. It's a temporary disturbance through the wetland, the wetlands get put back after, and it doesn't affect the wetlands, no. We're not filling the wetland to do it, we're just digging through the wetland and putting the wetland back, it's just a water line.
But it looks like you're above the wetland.
But it, no, it's going to, it's underneath the ground. This is going to be a pipe that's under the ground. It's a water line, it's to bring water to the development, it's not a drain line.
But in doing that, in disturbing the ground, it won't affect, make the wetland worse?
No, it will not make the wetland worse. No, ground, it does not, will not make the wetland worse.
Okay. Thank you. Bonnie, when you're doing the thing, would you want to just kind of check the grading on that?
Yes.
That area there?
Yeah, there's, their stormwater calculations did show that the post-construction runoff would be less than the pre-construction runoff, as is required by SDP.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name is John Cardente, I live at 58 Whitewood Road. I have two, now I have two comments or two questions. The first is the water line, is that going to follow the road that's in, I have an easement on my property for a road? And, okay, so it's not going to follow that?
No, this is through the, this is through the property that's part of this development that's going to.
Okay.
It's right across from the first entrance of Mil Pond, or second entrance of Mil Pond Circle.
Yeah, okay. I just wanted, the way you were pointing with the pen, I wanted to clarify that.
No, 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 wouldn't, not at all.
The second, and my, the concern I want to raise is traffic. Whitewood Road is already busy.
No access to Whitewood Road.
Can I finish, please? We get substantial amount of traffic from EMC commuters wishing to avoid the West Main Street congestion in Hogminton. And although there's no access on Whitewood, there certainly is access on Pond Street, which is in Upton. And I'm certain if we have a large population of people move in who are coming from 495, that traffic is going to flow down Whitewood and go across Pond Street. And so, it happens today.
Yeah.
It happens today. There are many people that come through and either go up through East Street or cut down Pond Street. And so, has that been factored into any of this? Because the road is already dangerous, it's poorly lit, there are no sidewalks, there are a lot of walkers, people drive fast.
There has not been a traffic study performed on this subdivision, it's generally, it's not, it's only 35 lots, it doesn't create additional, any real, a significant additional amount of vehicle trips per day. You know, it's, you know, the alternative, this developer is deciding to develop this as 35 single-family residential developments. There was, there's been a push over the years to develop this site as a condominium project. It would have been 94 units on this site if it was, if it was a condominium project based on the area and the ratios. So this is, you know, so, I mean, this is.
Let's not get into the 90.
No, no, but I'm just saying, the traffic, the traffic, we've done the best we can to mitigate, to develop the site with the fewest amount, you know, with the lots and then the traffic that we believe we're going to generate is much less than what some alternatives might have been.
There's one thing I can guarantee, the 35-lot subdivision will not, you will not see any increase in traffic whatsoever.
Do we have the traffic looked at anyway?
I'll explain it to you, but it's impossible, believe me. Who's next? Yes, ma'am.
Hi, my name's Leslie Huff, I live at 48B Whitewood Road. I have the odd lot, an odd lot that sits way back from the street, very much adjacent to what's going on. And just in relation to the question, can we request a traffic study? And also, can we get posted speed limits and people driving and enforce so that people drive more carefully on Whitewood Road? Because it really is dangerous how fast people drive in. There are a lot of runners and people with pets that walk, their dogs and whatnot. So anyway, it would be nice to get some better traffic control. Anyway, and are, now are the trucks going to be using Whitewood Road when they're doing the construction or they're not going to come on Whitewood Road to go to the, to act, you know, the building part, all the trucks and everything?
It wouldn't be, I can't foresee why they would use Whitewood Road when they could, you know, they're going to, they can come down Fisk Mill either from Milford or from, or from, you know, Hogminton Road.
Okay.
It doesn't make sense to come down, purchase, down camp or down Whitewood around, you know.
On which exit they take, yeah, but hopefully not.
Well, I mean, you know, some of the developers are local, some of the, you know, they're local people, so it's, we don't foresee Whitewood Road as being impacted by what we're proposing here at all.
Okay. My lot, it sits up against property, yes.
Yep.
Okay. There are wetlands on my property that are not greened in on this, okay. And water, there's like a stream that flows underneath my driveway and you can hear it. I mean, it, yeah. But then it flows down into this area. And in fact, some, to some extent, it goes across my yard, but furthermore, it flows down into this whole area that's in our backyards or my front yard that's very wet. Now, what's going to happen with that water? And why are you not even drawing it in? Because like I was told, you can't even build within certain amount. There are all these drawings on my property diagrams that say you can't be this close to the wetlands, it's like you're ignoring all that.
I don't believe that your wetlands are within 100 feet of our property line. We have no, we had our entire site looked at by a wetland scientist. They flagged all the wetlands that were located on our site. And I know that this, I'm familiar with your lot, and I don't believe that you have any wetlands within 100 feet of our property line. And we're, the only jurisdiction that we would be, the only limitations we would have would be to file a notice of intent if we were going to work within 100 feet of any wetlands. And we don't, I don't believe that you have wetlands on your property that are within, the reason that your, the reason that your house is set back so far is because all your wetlands were in the front by Whitewood Road.
No, there's, they're all.
And that's why you needed a driveway project.
No, you can come see my lot, there, no, right in front of my house.
We're not going to have a debate in the wetlands debate thing.
Well, okay, well, there are definitely wetlands right in front of my house, they go under my driveway and they, and you can see, hear the water, I can show you the water, and it's definitely within 100 feet of where you have that lot starting. So you can't, so I, so somebody needs to come out and walk that property and, you know, and show me where, because definitely there are, right in front of my house are wetlands. And where, and how, where do you propose to put the houses?
Houses are just going to be, pretty minimum setback off of the street, it'd be about 30, 40 feet back off the proposed road.
Okay.
No houses are going to be set up back on the hill at all.
Okay, good. And you don't plan to put in fill, like in other words, there's a, there are, you know, there are very slope, there's a lot of slope right there.
No, as far as this, well, this is a slope, so we'd be, if we anything, we'd be cutting into this hill, not filling it.
Okay.
This is, this slope's up away from us.
Right, right.
So we wouldn't be filling there at all.
Okay.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Jim Rowan, Park Street. Thank you.
Park Street, Mendon, Mass.
Park Street, what number, sir?
49, 49.
Mendon?
Mendon, yep, yep. Interested in whether or not the subdivision, all your subdivision rules and regulations are, is the applicant requesting waivers?
No. No waivers.
No waivers.
No waivers. You don't, a single access subdivision, you have no maximum road?
This is eliminating a single access subdivision.
Eventually.
Right. Okay, what, you spoke about the bond before, what type of securities do you require?
Require cash bond or a AA rating insurance company.
Yeah, okay. I was wondering about the site distance from your exit onto Fisk Mill Road?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have a, did you do any kind of site distance survey on that?
I don't have that, those, actually, the actual number, just, we know that it's in excess of 250 feet in each direction.
Because Fisk Mill Road is kind of a, I know you discussed traffic concerns before, but Fisk Mill Road right now is kind of a narrow winding road, which already has a quarter of a traffic. I'm also sort of interested in this because I'm a boarder director at Nipmuck Rod and Gun Club, which is adjacent to this property. And, you know, we're just concerned about the density and the population, but the club has been in existence since the 40s and we just wanted to let the public know at a hearing like this that the activities that go on there sometimes are not in compliance with some people's feelings. And the club has been, like I say, has been there for so long that we want, we just want the people who are getting into the development or purchasing the property to know what kind of activities have been going on there in the past. And, you know, we have rifle ranges and we have archery shooting and fishing derbies and that sort of activities and.
It's up to the realtor to explain it to whoever buys.
Well, that's, that's what I'm concerned about.
That's up to the realtor, that's really his job.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a real job.
Yep.
Now, one of my concerns on the board, but there was also a state law that states that if a club that's in existence cannot be shut down because of.
Yeah, that's right. Like you said.
There is protection because other than that, I'd be asking for more protection.
Yeah, okay. Anybody else?
Yeah.
Did, oh, the board, I think the Board of Health already gave a favorable report on the.
No, just gave us what they require.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, let's vote it.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Edward Bergman, I'm Sixth Shore Drive in Upton, Massachusetts. I'm also with the Nipmuck Rod and Gun Club. You had mentioned an open space lot near Fisk Mill Road, can you describe that to me?
Well, it's, this, there's, there's an open spaces all through here, there's two open space lots, there's open space parcel A and then open space, open space parcel A and open space parcel B. Open space parcel A is this area here, this location here, it consists of, but altogether, the total of open space is somewhere around 24 acres that's going to be left as open space.
And your intention is not to disturb that during the construction process?
The only thing we're going to do in this, the only thing that's happening in this open space is the construction of a stormwater basin here and a wetland replication area in here. The majority of this open space is wetland, the remaining open space is, includes the pond, what, you know, what portion of the pond is on this property and everything around the pond going that way. That's, so that's not going to be altered at all as well.
So are there lots on the left side as I view it of that cul-de-sac?
Here?
Yes.
Yes, but they stop right here.
And how far are they from the pond?
Quite a, significantly quite a way, about.
Testament.
Maybe 300 feet or so.
And that, those trees will all be left out, that, you know, everything will be left there screaming, nothing will be disturbed within that area.
Right. And the runoff that you're deflecting up near that cul-de-sac, where's that going to go?
Well, comes down this way into this basin here and then dumps this way.
Okay, and that basin will be adequate to catch all of that?
Oh, yeah.
Our concern being that you're not flooding.
Yeah, no, we've done the calculations, we're not going to flood out anything and.
Now, the other thing, just so you're aware, so the board is aware, there is state law saying there's a 500-foot radius around each house that cannot be used for hunting. So this is actually encroaching on our use of our land for hunting, potential.
Yeah. Well, you don't have access to land, you don't know. I can protect you for a long thing, but that 500 feet is a safety factor that the city.
No, I understand that. My concern is there was an attempt in Upton to extend that, and should that come before the board, I'd just like to, you know, go on the record that we're concerned about that now.
I feel the state knows what this.
Okay.
Safety zone is personal.
Anybody else?
Anyone else?
Can I ask you one more question about your.
Just have the lady back you.
Patricia Flynn, 7 Whittier Road. Bob, could you please show me on the map where exactly the building will start and how close the homes will be to Whittier Road?
Yeah, no, these lots, these lots are 45,000 square foot lots, they have 140 feet of front, they're roughly 360, 380 feet deep. The proposal is to, is to grade just off the edge of the roadway. These houses are going to sit somewhere about 50 or 60 feet off of the road. There'll be in excess of 250 feet probably of undisturbed backyard in all of these houses along this side here.
Okay.
Well, during construction, you have no interest in triggering anything and you're going to leave a buffer. However, once it gets sold, inevitably a homeowner has right if they so choose.
Well, yeah, but it's.
They determine it on wetlands to go back and clear their entire lot if they so choose.
That's correct.
Again, I'm just, I just, total transparency, the builder has no.
You're right. The builder has no intention of clearing the lots beyond what he wants to develop. Correct.
I just want to be fair, that ultimately a homeowner may have different options.
Right, right.
Okay, anyone else? You want to say?
I have one more question about your.
No, I just, on your, your wetlands, I mean, not your wetlands, your drainage system, you said it drains down into the catch basin. Does the catch basin discharge into a retention pond or?
No, that's not a catch basin, that is a detention pond.
It's a retention.
That is a detention pond right there.
Detention pond, okay.
That's correct.
That's, and that just drains into the wetland?
It collects the water, slows it down and drains towards the wetland, that's correct.
Against the wetlands, okay.
Yep.
Okay, anyone else? Yes, sir.
Judy Barton, 4 Whittier Road. My question to you is the same thing. The traffic up in the small areas that we're in is horrendous. We're on very narrow roads up there. I really think there should be some way of looking into the amount of traffic added to on top of what we've got now. The roads are extremely narrow with buses and it's a dangerous situation up a Highland Street, all in that area.
Shouldn't affect.
Shouldn't affect Whittier.
Shouldn't affect up a Highland Street at all.
No, but we travel those roads. We go down Whitewood, we go down those areas, they're all goat roads, and now we're adding more on top of it. That's my concern.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Did you say the size of the house?
Say, give us your name again.
Leslie Huff, 48B Whitewood Road.
Okay.
Okay, did you say the square footage and the price range values approximately?
No, but generally, these are going to be four-bedroom colonial-type homes with two-car attached garages. You know, and for the most part, unless slopes, you know, require us maybe do garage under here and there, but these are going to be, you know, these are going to be good-sized houses, they're not going to be shacks, they're not going to be.
Do you know about what the price range is going to?
No, we don't know. By the time we, I mean, it could be, it could be two years before, you know, we got the first house on the market, so who knows what the market is going to be like at that time, but.
So what, what's your goal of, when, when are you hoping to start building?
As soon as we get all our permits and approvals in hand, then they would probably begin to, you know, to build the road and, and at that point, you know, we have to do, we have to do the roadway, we have to get it relatively, we have to get the pavement in, we have to get the, the rough pavement, um, the hydrants have to be in place and the water line before they can even build any lot, so.
So, so like a year from now?
Uh, it's quite possible, I mean, we would hope to start this year as far as the, you know, the construction on the property, but the first house may be a year from now, yes, it's possible.
Okay. And, and can I just, I'm sorry to get this right back, maybe, but again, where my lot is, that, the house, the, the lot that, that's the most adjacent to my lot, remember? Yeah, okay, that house can't be close because look how narrow it is.
It'll be right down here.
No, okay, are the, is, is there, is that one big lot, the other one next one? Cause I.
This is a big lot right here.
Okay, okay, that one impacts me, that one, I look right out at it, so.
Yeah, this house is gonna be down by the road.
Okay, so it actually, it's like an L-shaped lot, that's all one lot?
It's kinda, yes, it's kind of a.
Oh, okay, okay, good, all right. All right, thanks.
Okay, uh, just one second, Larry, you have a comment?
Uh, yeah, I think the board may wanna see, uh, some, some access gradings, typical access grading for some of the lots, especially going up the hill where so, such a cut's gonna be necessary to, to install the road. Uh, so, given the way the lots are laid out now, it, I think it'd be helpful to see how you can get to the building site from the proposed road elevation, given the new side slopes that are being created to get the road in there.
We did show, um, if, if you, well, you don't, you don't have access to the drainage study, but on the drainage, uh, on the post-development drainage plan, we did show relative house locations with driveways where they would have to be to determine what, you know, how, where the runoff would go and how much previous area would be added in, in each lot, so, I mean, we, we didn't, I didn't grade them out, but I, I, I pretty much have a rough location of every lot. I mean, here again, these, you know, these, these lots here where this, where you're cutting into the road, um, you know, the, the houses will start back here in the natural ground so that the driveway will be brought up through, but, um, all the lots are developable. Well, I mean, I don't think that's an issue, it's really not.
Okay.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, yes, ma'am?
Tracy Maynard, 62 White Wood Road. Um, again, where my wetlands is, what is that black line called?
Which one, here?
Right, up, up.
This?
Yes, toward.
That's actually an existing stone wall.
Okay, but that, go, stop right there.
Yep.
And, safety, where the pond is to the left, that Muck Rod and, that area, what's that called?
This is an open space.
Open space.
Yeah.
So that line that you have for open space?
Yeah.
It's protected on my, where I live, the wetlands?
That's correct.
Okay, there will be no natural barrier put there or anything to disturb the wetlands or to prevent?
No.
Lockage?
And eventually, and eventually, you know, that, that particular property will be due to the town and go under a conservation restriction.
Okay.
And, you know, and, and we got, you know, it'll be monitored and nobody will be able to do anything with it.
Okay, cause there's a lot of nature in these wetlands too.
Yeah, no, we, that's, that's basically why we, you know, we, we make these lots only the size, we needed to make them to get enough developable area and we left the remaining area as, as open space.
Okay, and presently, there, on White Wood Road, the water drains down the, the road, uh, there's a drain, um, above my house next to, below his house that comes up, the road drain, a water drain, um, from the hill that also goes into, well, doesn't go to the wetland, but, um, that won't be disturbed either, right? That will stay there?
Right.
Am I saying that correctly, that water, there's a water drain?
There's like a, like a swale?
A couple of driveways on White Wood Road.
There's a swale along the road and then goes under culverts on the driveway.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yes.
So that won't be disturbed.
We're not gonna disturb anything along White Wood Road except for connecting a water line.
Okay.
It's gonna be below the existing ground, it's not gonna fill anything or disturb anything or, or deflect any current drainage patterns.
And will there ever be any road that can go in that way?
No, nope. It will require the extensive filling of wetlands, so.
I know.
That's why, you know, that's why it's not happening.
Thank you.
Originally, when this thing was presented back in 1988, you could've put a road out there, you can't anymore, that's the problem.
Anyone else have any questions?
Can I?
We're gonna, we're gonna continue this hearing anyway, so.
I'd like to continue the hearing until 4:08, Larry?
Yep.
Until 4:08:14. It's seven, 7:05, I think?
7:05.
How crucial is it for them to leak the water?
Larry?
Because of pressure?
Yeah, well, because of, uh, accessibility. Moved by John, uh, seconded by Leonard to continue the public hearing till, uh, April 8th. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Enamish or four? Again, it'll be 7:05, April 8th, here.
Bob, you wanna take these and return them?
Yeah, I was just gonna ask the same thing, Bob.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Save your client a couple of pennies.
Yeah, at least the front one.
Twenty-one five.
Yeah, give them both, give them everything, it's easier.
Yeah, take it then.
Certainly.
Larry?
Oh, Bob, was this the former reception center?
I don't think so, no, this is the former day spa that.
Yeah.
Oh, oh, sure, sure, okay, yep, yep.
Littleton Street, uh.
Yep, 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 okay.
Headlessed right there.
It used to be a day spa?
Mm-hmm.
Where is that? 85 and 16.
Okay, Bob. Oh.
Let Larry, let Larry start off, he's, he's.
Site plan waiver request for Family Pharmacy, Inc., 105 East Main Street. The applicant requests a site plan waiver to authorize a change of use from a beauty school to a pharmacy on the subject premises. The proposed pharmacy will return the site to a retail use for which it was originally approved.